Can you pull it up on your phone again? I think we may just have to proceed without video if you want to. Because it's live currently, but no video, just audio. I want to make sure that the public can at least hear it. It does have good connection. I'm just not sure what's going on with. Which camera is this?
Okay.
Can you hear?
I think so.
On there, okay. Do we have any just testing and testing?
Yeah.
I think we should see if it's on there.
Um, no.
Not opposed to public embarrassment.
Okay.
Yeah, what if I'd like to talk into the microphone? Do you have it on there or is there a way to? Do you have pictures? No.
Nobody else, just audio.
But I think the audios are.
Okay. Sure. Well. About thirty percent, right? Sorry. Did you get this, Mike?
I did.
You're so polite.
Are we ready to go?
There's no video, but it appears to be audio.
Are we ready?
Guess so.
I'll ask for the presidency, please.
Pledge thee to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open a meeting with public comment. Is there any public comment?
I'm Shirley Wilson. I just have a couple of questions. Are we still paying the county health nurse twenty-four seven or is she back to regular wages?
Well, we're not paying her twenty-four seven. We're just paying her for her on-call time on the weekends. Isn't that right?
Yes.
Is, is there any date when that might cease? I guess is there any set protocol for it to cease?
It's all, it's all still a reverse, uh, lost the word already, reimbursement, reimbursed through COVID.
Okay.
As, as where her wages are coming from for that purpose.
And then are we seeking a full-time sanitarian or are we still on part-time? Uh, what, what do I want to say?
Contracted.
Um. By the hour, however, we hired him. Are we still on that protocol?
Yeah, he's still contracted.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? So if not, we will move on to this Nicole Brown planning your advisory board appointments.
Good morning, commissioners. I have three, I'm sorry, two boards with letters of individuals seeking appointment to those boards. I have three letters of interest for the planning board. The planning board is currently a four, what, how many members do we have? Five members, but they would like it to be seven if possible. And with out of these three letters, one is a current member seeking reappointment. So I will just read these aloud. All of these are letters of interest for the planning board. I, Dennis Miller, am interested in remaining on the planning board for Broadwater County. This is dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Second letter is from Richard Tramp dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Dear Nicole, I understand there is an opening on the board. This is to let you know I would like to join the planning board. I did work with the city of Belgrade by being active on different boards. Richard Tramp. Third letter. Hi Nicole, this is Bill Petrovich. I would like the commissioners to consider me as a planning board member for Broadwater County. And he includes his phone number, mailing address, and email address. This is dated March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. So the planning board did recommend or request that the commission appoint each of these members to the board. So two new members being Bill Petrovich and Richard Tramp and one renewal of board appointment being Dennis Miller. That would bring the planning board to a seven-member board.
Can you tell us who's on there right now? I have Trinity Van den Aker and Mary Heineman. Is that true?
That's correct. Uh, in addition, Herb Argabright, Jenny Schaber. Trying to remember where everyone sits. Jenny Schaber, Dennis Miller, Herb Argabright, Mary Heineman, and Trinity Van den Aker. And Dennis Miller, uh, his term did expire in twenty twenty-one, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. But he is seeking reappointment.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve these three gentlemen for the planning board or I guess we want to discuss first if we wanted, wanted to go to a seven-member board?
Well, yeah, I think we need to have that discussion first. Um. I mean, in the past, it's been difficult just to maintain a five-member board.
Yes. And we did have the discussion on just because there are seven members now your forum, of course, is a higher number. So we'd need four present instead of three.
Um. Do they have bylaws, the planning board? Have they said a bylaws?
They do.
So do the bylaws need to be amended first?
Um, I believe the bylaws, and I should have brought those with me. I apologize. I believe the bylaws state that it's a seven-member board.
Do they?
Uh, we previously were only operating with five because that's the most interest we could get, but maybe that is a prudent, um, discussion or decision first.
Yeah.
I, I failed to even think about bringing those with me.
Okay.
But the last I remember reading, it did say seven.
Okay.
So maybe we can wait on this one until next week when I can have a more definitive answer
Right.
on making sure that those bylaws do say seven because you're right, I think that that should, that should be, uh, very first.
Yep. What do you guys think?
We will table that till next week.
Okay. Second appointment, this is for the Historical Society Board. This letter is dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to you, the Broadwater County Commissioners. Dear County Commissioners, please accept this letter of interest for an appointment to the Broadwater County Historical Society Board of Directors. I am very interested in the history of Broadwater County. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Mike Millay of Townsend, Montana. And that board currently does have a vacancy.
How's Bill Mike's last name?
M.I.L.L.A.Y.
Yeah, I served with Mike on the airport board and, uh, I think Mike would be a great addition to the historical society, so. I would make the motion to, uh, appoint Mike Millay to the Historical Society.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Mike Millay to the Historical Society Board. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries.
I guess I didn't, I didn't state the term, but it, we're doing three-year terms, three-year terms, right?
Three. Yep, three for everyone unless specifically stated otherwise. And I will have that letter on your table today for your signature.
All right, is that all for board appointments?
That is.
All right, is that the system? Okay.
Yep, that's it for board appointments.
So we'll go to the ten oh five COS double C dirt.
So this is a boundary location from double C dirt. Landowner Steve Campbell is here today. If you have specific questions, do each of you have a copy of your COS affidavit? Okay?
So I went online, tried to figure out this looking at the, the map and you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to describe where the change is, the boundary change.
So if you can see here, this, sorry, I know that's kind of far, but there's this government lot two, is that two? Government lot one, I'm sorry. The old boundary previously was here. So this government lot one was one parcel and then this was one parcel. This boundary line is now moving to this location and so instead of an east-west boundary, it's turning into a northwest or north-south. Does that make sense?
All right.
You see where that's moving? I mean, there's still only two parcels there, um.
Okay, so that separates, uh, the amended track, eh?
That is correct.
Gotcha. And it states here it's for, uh, organized pivots?
That's correct, yep. For the affidavit, no new parcels being created and the purpose is to organize the pivots from each other.
All right. Are they here today?
Uh, yes. Mr. Steve Campbell is here today.
Okay. I'd like to hear from Steve.
Certainly. I'll step aside over here.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. So tell us a little bit more about what you're doing.
Cleaning up the track lines and getting the pivots in the boundaries to match each other.
Are the pivots overlapping this area now or, or something? I'm, I'm not sure why.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a, where, where we do this line here,
Mm-hmm.
it splits this pivot from this pivot.
Okay, so that's like just a half pivot on that one?
Yeah. Th- this is a half turn and then this is a half turn.
Gotcha. Okay.
That wraps around.
Okay. All right. I understand that now.
And then this is a pivot.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's what I needed to understand.
Okay.
I couldn't tell that from looking with my head on the map.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I'll, I'll move that, uh, we approve the boundary location for, uh, double C dirt as requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded for the boundary location for double C dirt. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? Have we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Okay, decision Nicole Brown, Westside Trails subdivision request extension.
Do each of you have a copy of this?
I don't think I received that. Or I may have and I, I just might have missed it, so.
That's okay. I can certainly make you a copy.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Brad.
Mark has copies here for you.
Go. Hey, thank you, Mark.
And this is Mark Fasting. He is the engineer working with the developers on this project with Allied Engineering. And the author of this letter. Would you like me to read this letter aloud?
Uh, probably should be read into the record.
Okay. Okay. So this letter is dated March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one to the Broadwater County Board of Commissioners. This is a request for preliminary plot extension for Westside Trails major subdivision located in portions of section eighteen, township two north, range one east of Broadwater County. Dear Board of Commissioners, this letter is our request for preliminary plot extension for Westside Trails major subdivision for Three Forks Properties LLC. We would ask for a three-year extension or whatever extended timeline Broadwater County deems appropriate. Following is a brief summary of the project for your reference. The overall project is a residential subdivision located in section eighteen, township two north, range one east, Broadwater County, Montana. The overall subdivision consists of two hundred and forty-two residential lots and totals approximately five hundred and thirty-six point six one acres and is located approximately five miles northwest of the city of Three Forks, Montana. The overall project is located approximately two miles west of Highway two eighty-seven on the south side of Wheatland Road and just east of the Broadwater-Jefferson County line. Each of the two hundred and forty-two lots are designated for one single-family dwelling unit. As outlined in the final plot application for phase one, the subdivision lots are intended to be marked and sold in different phases. Thus, phasing of the subdivision was requested for final plat in two thousand and eight. Westside Trails subdivision phase one consists of forty-seven lots on eighty-seven point six one acres and was recorded on November tenth, two thousand and eight. Extension, extensions have been granted for the overall development. For reference, see attached most recent preliminary plot extension dated April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. We have provided a phasing plan amendment which was submitted to Broadwater County Planning Department on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and has been included for your reference. We were asked to provide the phasing plan amendment which shows the proposed phases and includes estimated timelines. The applicant is proposing to maintain four phases. Phase one, already being recorded, and phase two, currently in the process of final plat procedures, along with future phase three and future phase four. Westside Trails subdivision phase one, recorded on November eight, November tenth, two thousand and eight, consisting of forty-seven lots on eighty-seven point six one acres. Westside Trails subdivision phase two, currently being proposed, consisting of fifty lots on one hundred ten point nine nine acres. Westside Trails subdivision phase three, future, consisting of fifty-three lots on one hundred point seven nine acres. Westside Trails subdivision phase four, future, consisting of ninety-two lots on two hundred thirty-seven point two two acres. We had anticipated that our phasing plan amendment for Westside Trails subdivision may replace the need for any additional preliminary plot extensions. However, based on the recommendation from Broadwater County Planning Community Development Department, we are submitting this request to ensure an extension of the preliminary plat prior to the deadline of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-one for planning and final plating of the future phases. We recognize that a separate final plat application will be required for review of each independent phase. Phase two is currently in the process of final plat procedures. For review, in hopes of recording around the end of April. Phase three, future, and phase four, future, will address all conditions at such time each phase is being proposed. Based on the phasing plan amendment, we also recognize future preliminary plot extensions may be required pending actual home site construction demands and timelines. Please call us if you have any comments or questions. Thank you. Sincerely, Allied Engineering Services, Mark Fasting, civil engineer.
So I guess we, we had some previous questions on, on whether I want to say previous extensions were granted in an appropriate timeline. Has that been solved?
Not to my knowledge.
Jania?
I, you know, I, I've looked into that a little bit. I guess what I would say is that they, they were granted. We can't go back and undo whether or not they were granted. Um, so
Okay.
at, at this point in time, they were granted. We're kind of operating under those
Okay.
particular ones. Uh, but I do have some additional information for you if you would like it.
Yes, please.
So, um, what I was looking at, and I could stand up at the podium if that, please.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, good morning. I'm Jania Hatfield, deputy county attorney. Um, what I was looking at on this one is, um, whether, uh, you know, looking at the extensions and on this case, we're operating under Montanico and annotated seventy-six, three, six, ten that does allow for extension of preliminary plats um, for a mutually agreed upon period of time. Um, but you are not required to give an extension if you do not want to. Um, I was looking, um, because one of the concerns is that the regulations on this is, are old. They're from two thousand and six. And under seventy-six, three, six, ten, we are not able to make any changes to what regulations this is under. Um, so, um, what I guess I would recommend at this time would be a, um, one-year extension of the amount of time allowed. Um, and they could come back again after that with the knowledge that you guys are not required to grant any additional extensions. Any questions?
So are you saying a one-year extension for two, three, and four or just for two?
Um, I was saying a one-year extension for two, three, and four. I think if you wanted to split it up between and do just two, because two looks like it's a lot closer to being ready for final plat. Um, and so if you wanted to split it up and do it differently, you absolutely can.
So i- if we just extend two, does la- does that leave phases three and four open for new regulations or not?
Um. What would happen is if, if three and four are not continued, yes, they would have to go back through the, the process again on those ones. Um, I would I would suggest if you're extending to extend all and then if they want to get three and four ready in time, they can. That allows them that ability. Um. And I would also suggest, you know, putting a reason on the record for why you're doing what you're doing.
So with, with, with new subdivision rules coming into regulations that we're presently working on right now, would three and four end up underneath those regulations or do they end up underneath the two thousand and six regulations?
Uh, they would end up under whatever regulations are in place at the time
Of the extension?
of, of, well, of preliminary plat being
Okay.
of going through that process. So, um, right now, this one is going to stay under the regulations that it's currently under. It's not, it's not going to change. We don't have the ability by statute to change it.
Okay. So if you, if you, if you extend three and four, then possibly fo- phase four is not scheduled for buildout until twenty thirty-four? So we're looking at sixteen, we're looking at, uh, twelve years down the road and we're still underneath regulations that were approved in two thousand and six.
I guess if you were to extend three and four, that would give them time if they wanted to work on it sooner. It would give them some time to do that. Um, but there's no guarantee of another extension in the future as the, the statute says it's not required that you give extensions in the future. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm trying to formulate that in my mind, uh, how that's going to look in a year from now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can understand that. I just, um, I guess it's, it's a decision that's up to you guys as, as to how you want to handle that.
Okay.
But, um, you know, I, I do see allowing them some time to, to work on this would be beneficial, but, um.
I guess, so Mike, you're, uh, if I'm following your thought, maybe approve phase two, I mean, extend all phases, but, uh, with, with the idea that, um, phases three and four in a year from now, maybe that approval would be based on our new regulations? Is that, is that what you're?
Well, if you're saying i- if, if we extend them all right now, then they're all, they're all going to be under these rules. So if we extend them now, then, and that, and then it's approved, then twenty-eight year, or twenty-eight years since it was first, since the regulation rule would be, would be when you would build out. So you're, you're going to be working on, on a twenty-year-old plan of standards. You know, that, that, that's like the, the silos that was approved in nineteen seventy. Now we're fighting all the problems because everything's been changed.
Yeah.
So, you know, the future commissions are going to have to go through what their new rules are and then, then they're going to find out that when this comes in, they don't, you can't do anything with it approved from the two thousand and six standards.
But you wouldn't have to approve in one year. You wouldn't have to extend phases three and four, right?
Correct. You are, you are not required.
We'd not be required to do that.
No. You would not be required to do that.
Mm-hmm. So that would give, uh, the developer an opportunity to?
Uh, yeah, it gives the developer the opportunity to work on it if they want to work on it.
If they want to work on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I, I, I'm, I'm not concerned on what he's working with if he, if he wants to work on it in another year. What I'm concerned about is, is, is the, the amount of time to the buildup.
Mm-hmm.
Because like I said, we're going to be twenty-eight-year-old rules. If, if, if you extend it now, then, then, then he's going to be under two thousand and six regulations. We have new regulations coming out this year.
Yeah.
Whether or not they're strange, more strange or not, I don't know. But the thing is that if you, if you extend this thing down, then, then it, uh, it just perpetuates that. I mean, it's what we've run into with other ones. They're working on nineteen seventy subdivisions, you know, in two thousand and twenty-one.
But we'd only be extending it for one year, giving them the opportunity to make that change in one year. And we, we would not be required to extend them after, say, this time next year on phases three and four. If, if we felt that those regulations, uh, were not applicable to what we're doing now, right? Does, does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
What do you think, Debbie?
Extend it for a year.
Yeah. Give them the opportunity to make the change to three and four, knowing that we may not grant that extension in one year on three and four unless the subdivision regulations work for us. What's your guys' thoughts?
Hi. Alana and Griffith with Griffith and Cummings. Um, I am the attorney for the developer. Mark Fasting is here. He's the engineer for the developer. And Curtis Van Dyke is the representative for the developer. Um, so what we're talking about, and this is kind of a weird two-tier that you have, because you have the extension in front of you right now. Later on today, you actually have the phasing plan. Under Montana law, you are allowed to adopt a phasing plan and should adopt a phasing plan when you come in with phases. There's been some changes in the laws, which is why this was confusing at the first part when we first went in for phasing.
You know what? You can take your mask off if you'd like.
And I am, I've had both of my shots, so-
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I, I have had both of my shots, so, um, so when, if you look at 76-3-6-17, it actually allows a phasing plan to go out 20 years. I'm not sure why it went out to 2034, but it would certainly be within your ability to limit the developer to 20 years buildout. Montana law understands that there's a dual kind of balancing act going on, which you correctly pointed out. There is the fact that these larger developments take time to build out, but then there's also changes in Montana law. So Montana law has said that 20 years is the appropriate time to allow for buildout, and that again is 76-3-6-17. So what we would ask, and I'm kind of putting both of the requests together right now, is that the phasing plan be adopted and the end date be 20 years out from the day that the application, because that's what Montana law says consistently. And that's what Alan, uh, you have a contract attorney on this one as well, Alan McCormick. And Alan and I had discussed that, and that was supposed to be the plan, but I was, did not tell the engineer well enough, and that's my fault, um, was that we did the 20-year phasing plan. So, and just so you know, we also talked about the extensions. There's a case, Oldenburg versus Flathead County, which is kind of what establishes the fact that we were beyond the extension time. That's what happened. But Oldenburg versus Flathead County is a case where you can grant an extension after the time for the extension has already phased away. So I think we've, yeah, that's where we're at on that. Would you like to hear from the engineer really quickly?
Sure.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mark Fasting with Allied Engineering. So basically, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, we've kind of done a few things in terms of trying to stay ahead of this. Curtis can speak to it more, but when the recession hit in 2008, they'd built all the roads for the subdivision, uh, seven miles of roads, actually. And just based on the market and the recession and the demand, uh, that's when they platted phase one, which was 47 lots. And quite frankly, uh, Curtis was involved in getting the extensions, uh, throughout the last, uh, 12, 13 years. Um, and things have just picked up, and in fact, uh, we'd started this process about a year ago and had done traffic studies, uh, to update and verify actually what's out there in terms of traffic. Um, so we're about a year into it in terms of trying to get what we had intended to final plat phase two and three. Uh, but as things progressed, we just wanted to simplify for everybody. We were asked to provide a phasing plan. I guess I didn't realize there was a 20-year phasing plan, so I had estimated based on what the builder thought the current projected timeline would be for 15 homes a year. Um, so that's what the phase two, three, and four were based on, 15 homes a year. It might go faster, might go significantly faster, it might go slower. We don't know 100%, but, uh, so that was the basis of the phasing plan amendment. And then, uh, Nicole had reached out, uh, actually got a deficiency letter on the, on the phasing plan. Um, I think it was just basically to clarify, hey, we've got this deadline for plat extension coming up as well. So I was hearing it from a couple different people on exactly what to do. I just want to make sure we, we do it the right way. So we had like a day, let's just submit this plat extension just to be safe. Okay? Um, so I might be a little bit contradictory here on the, the extension request versus the phasing plan amendment, and whatever one you guys decided, or whatever one was discussed, I'm, I'm okay with it. So I, I guess I just wanted to give you guys a little history on the basis for why we submitted a phasing plan initially, and that it was like, hey, let's just make sure we cover ourselves, let's get the extension request in. So that's what we did.
Okay. So was there, was there ever a phasing plan submitted?
There was a phasing plan amendment. There, if I do not have in the record an actual phasing plan.
Okay.
And I think everyone that has been involved with this realized that we're now trying to figure out how to move forward with phases when it was not initially submitted to be a phase development.
Right, okay.
Which is why Jania has involved Alan McCormick, Alana, and Cory Swanson.
Okay. And that, I guess that's how I under- that's how I understood that at the beginning. It was, it was just a, a development in, in one piece. And then I understand that the, the market changed and they, they wanted to do phase one. So, um, I mean, I went down and, and drove all these roads last week, just so I could have an idea in my head what this really looked like, and, um, I, I, I do see what you're trying to accomplish.
I mean, again, I think the phase two, we had kind of retracted from phase two and three, just said, let's just get phase two done. It's, it simplifies things for the immediate need in terms of vigilante electric, getting out there and getting all their utilities in. We've paid for that. All the lots have been penned. Uh, there's a few things we need to finalize with final plat, uh, an improvements agreement for, um, I think we're gonna basically pave the first 800 feet of Wheatland Road-
Mm-hmm.
-from Rowling Glen Ranch Road to that first access.
Okay.
Uh, outside of that, you know, in terms of regulations, I can appreciate, they're from 2008, but I'm not exactly sure what has changed in terms of the overall. I mean, if we had a, a deadline, we'd probably just forge ahead and try to get utilities in for everything and try to stay ahead of the market. But again, if we can do the phase plan development and kind of get utilities in as the market demands, that was my hope. But, you know, if that needs to be streamlined. I'm not sure if the 20 years is from 2008, or is it from-
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my question.
It's from 2008.
From 2008, okay.
I would be, that makes total sense. I bet, I think, I know we project way out there, but if we need to get final plat done from 20 years from the original approval, I'm sure the owner would be okay with that one, would you say?
Yes.
May I interject one quick thing?
Yep.
So the reason I didn't talk about 76-3-6-17 is because I did some, um, research on it, and that law was actually passed in 2017. And in there, it says that it applies to all phase development applications submitted after May 8th of 2017. So that's why I was telling you that you're under 76-3-6-10, is because technically the 76-3-6-17 would not apply to the subdivision because of when we receive the application for it.
Correct. And when Alan and I talked, we agreed, I agreed on behalf of the developer that we would submit to it.
Oh, I'm, I-
Yeah. And I know, I, I, I can see where this went. This went from me, Alan, Cory, you, and so we're playing telephone.
Yeah, we're playing a little bit of telephone.
And that's, we just have not talked, so I apologize.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry about that, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would the commissioners like to know more about 76-3-6-17? And what that would change as far as things go?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and-
No, it's fine. And I unfortunately did not make a copy of this for all of you, but if you need a copy, I can. It's a significantly longer statute, um, that goes into phased plan development, um, and it does give the 20-year date, um, but it also in subsection four, um, gives some information about when each phase is started. So it says, "Prior to commencement, commencement of each phase, the subdivider shall provide written notice of the governing body. The governing body shall hold a public hearing pursuant to 76-3-6-05." I mean, just, it allows for more of that public hearing for each individual phase. It allows for, um, more to go on. I don't know, and Alana might be able to correct me on this, if it would allow for updating to current regulations.
That it doesn't. It doesn't allow for that. So the, the main, so the main change that you have typically, you guys did do a subdivision update. Um, when Alan and I looked at it, we didn't see anything that would have changed for this particular subdivision in the update. Um, DEQ has made some changes, and that's your main change. Um, but the Montana Legislature had looked at that when they implemented this in 2017, and I was actually a part of that, which is why I'm familiar with it, and said I would submit to, the developer would submit to it. Um, specifically, that's one of the main costs, is having to go back to DEQ, and the legislature had considered that, and specifically did not include DEQ review as one of the things that you had to go back to, because they wanted to allow the developers 20 years of certainty of what they had in, within their communities.
If, if you guys would like me to make a copy of this particular statute, I absolutely can for you.
Um, we've got it here.
You got it there.
Yeah. And, and that was one of my questions later on. I knew that there was, public hearing was a requirement.
Under, if we're under 76-3-6-17, then yes.
Yeah.
Public hearing is a requirement. If we are under, uh, 76-3-6-10, then no.
Okay. So you said that's 76-3-3-10?
Uh, 6-10.
Or-
Yeah, 76-3-6-10.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion?
So I guess our decision for, for this part, because we're going to get into the, uh, phase planning amendment later on, is whether we're just going to grant the extension.
Yep. Yeah, this is just the request for the extension.
Mm-hmm. What do you think, Deb?
And to be clear, the extension is for phase one, or for the-
Uh, it, well, it, uh, we, we could-
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. I mean, we, we could, I guess one of the options is, is we could, um, grant the extension for, for all phases, right? Knowing that in one year, we'll have to revisit this and make a determination on phases three and four.
Yes. Yes, that's, that's what that would be.
Okay. I guess at this point, I'm, that's something that I, I'll make a motion to do, to, uh, grant the extension on all phases for one year, with the understanding that, uh, we're going to revisit this in one year to discuss phases three and four. Give the developer an opportunity to possibly make some changes.
Is there a second?
Uh, I would second that motion.
Motion had been made to second and to grant the extension for one year for all phases, two, three, and four for Westside Trails. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? Make a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same? Motion carries. Okay, now we will move on to Antelope Run, one minor subdivision request for preliminary plat approval.
Do each of you have your findings of fact and approval on Antelope Run? If not, I do have an extra copy here.
I probably could use that, Nicole. I did go over to the office and picked that up this morning.
No problem. I'm sorry, I should have, uh, thought about printing you off one.
Thank you.
So we are here today to make a decision on preliminary plat approval of the Antelope Run One Minor Subdivision. I've read through the Findings of Fact and Order Report at previous meetings. The, uh, one of the conditions was discussed at length at last week's commission meeting. That's condition number seven. That condition states, "The applicant shall contribute 7/50ths of the cost to upgrade KOA Road to Broadwater County subdivision road standards for a number one local road. It shall be required that they obtain a current estimate." So that condition was questioned by the developer at last week's meeting. So it was tabled in order to allow the commissioners more time to consider this condition, and also for Jania to be able to, uh, research this condition a little further. So I do believe at this time, Jania, has some information to share with you. Is that correct, Jania?
Yes.
Okay, if you are prepared for that.
Yes.
So, good morning, Commissioners, Jania Hatfield, Deputy County Attorney again. So we are looking at whether or not you can require the developer to pay a proportionate share of the upgrades to KOA Road. Under Montana Code annotated seventy six, three, five, ten, you do have that ability. It says, local government may require a subdivider to pay or guarantee payment for part or all of the costs of extending capital facilities related to, and then one of the things listed is public roads. It says the cost must reasonably reflect the expected impacts directly attributed to the subdivision. And it also says, all fees, costs, or other money paid to buy a subdivider under this section must be expended on the capital facilities for which the payments were required. So, um, this is not in our current regulations, but it is in Montana Code annotated. There are some things I would suggest that you look at when you're looking at this. The first thing is that it needs to be a proportionate share. You can't require him, or a subdivider, to pay all of the costs. You need to look at, you know, how much of the costs are, are on them. So, look at what, the cost needs to reasonably reflect the expected impacts attributed to that subdivision. You could look at doing something like a traffic impact study or something like that to start looking at what are the reasonable costs. I also think it's important to note that what you spend the money on needs to be spent on this particular road. I would strongly encourage you to have a separate bank account for this particular road, to have a, a plan for working on this road and to plan on spending the money. I do think that possibly on condition seven, I would, I would suggest doing some changes to the wording there to make it more specific. I do think it's fairly vague. I would cite to the statute seventy six, three, five, ten as where, where you're getting the authority to do this. I would make in there, make it clear how we're going to be determining this proportionate share and how all of that's going to happen. And also, you know, it does require them to do a study. I don't know if you guys would want to, you know, have approval or a look at that study. So, um, that's it in a nutshell, but if you would like me to answer questions, I'm happy to.
And I guess that was going to be one of my first questions, who's going to be required to do the engineering and get the estimates? And, and just like you said, do the studies.
Um, I think that you could, you could, either you could require yourselves to do it, or you could require the subdivider to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I know there is a case out of Lewis and Clark County, I have read through that case. It's, uh, Christensen versus Lewis and Clark County. And I've read through that case, and, um, many of the things that I'm suggesting are to try and avoid similar.
Right. So here's, here's a question. So say, I, now, we all went down and looked at that, so we had a pretty good idea of, of what we were up against there, and, and a pretty significant challenge on that road. But there, there is a lot of property back there that could be subdivided by other developers. Would this subdivider have an opportunity to recoup any of that cost if other developers decide to use that road? Yeah, I know they do that like with power lines and things like that, you know, someone puts in a, pays for a power line, it's other people come onboard, they, they have an opportunity to recoup some of that money. Could they do that?
That is an excellent question that I did not include in my legal research, so I don't have an answer today. But I can always look at it, but yeah, I don't have an answer for you.
I'm just thinking that, just something that could possibly soften the impact a little bit for the subdivider. I, I don't know, it was just a thought.
I, I appreciate the thought, but I just can't give you an answer on it right now.
So i- i- if, if you end up with the county having to go in there and do those improvements, can we charge the one fiftieth to any future subsequent subdivision that impacts that road?
So, I, I think we can do this same, they have to pay a proportionate share of any upgrades that need to be made. So we can, we can use this same statute on any future, uh, future subdividers. I don't know about the one fiftieth, though. It was more what I was seeing was a proportionate share rather than a certain number.
Would that be based off on just the current loss that they're proposing? Or would that be based off from future, future development that? Because this just says Antelope One, so I'm assuming that they're going to be Antelope Two or Three sometime in the future.
Yeah.
Just an assumption.
So, yeah, so right now, we could only do it based off of current, like, what is this particular subdivision? How is this particular subdivision going to impact this particular road? We can't say, you know, we can't say, oh, in the future, then it's going to have to get bigger, or we're going to have to do more things, that would have to be assessed in the future.
Yeah. And then, and I guess along with that, that would have to be a county standard, is that correct, Nicole?
That's correct.
So whether there's more development or not, the road should still be built to that standard too?
Depending on the number of vehicle trips per day. The traffic impact study, also through the number of blocks that are being proposed.
And, and the other thing Darryl brought up was the cost of engineering, this, that's required of the developer to establish, to, to go out and get that estimate, right? I mean, that's, that's not a county.
We typically put that in as a condition of approval, that the developer hires the engineer to perform that work.
Yep.
And that is already in here as a condition of approval, proper, on number seven?
No, we don't have that built in there.
Says that it shall be required that they obtain a current estimate.
For road construction purposes.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, that's, that's, it's their responsibility to get that estimate and have the engineering done, right?
The way that it's worded does not require the engineer, simply the road contractor to provide the estimate for the upgrading of the road, but not the engineer.
How about on the very last page where it says, the applicant is financially responsible for actual outside engineering, consulting professional and contracted service fees? Would that cover that?
No.
Nope.
That covers an hour cost, so the work that Jerry Durbin would have to perform on this.
Yep.
On behalf of the county. So that's actual outside engineering.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So if you go to number six?
That's for the internal subdivision road, so not the arterial, not KOA road. You could strike that to state all roads instead of internal, so I'll, I'm not sure how you'd report that.
Yeah.
You might want it as a separate condition, actually.
So what is, uh, what is a proportional share? Do we, do we stay with seven fiftieths, or should it be something different?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yep.
Okay, so Jania and I, I'm going to slide.
Do you want me to?
Okay.
So when we discussed this and visited the site, Jania and I, and this is not her official legal opinion, so I don't want to speak for her, but regarding proportionate share, so seventy six, three, was it, five, ten? Regarding extension of capital facilities, states that the developer should pay their proportionate share. So maybe not necessarily seven fiftieths, it would be based off of a traffic impact study broken down by, in this case, feet traveled down the road. Since it is only one mile, I don't know that we would look at a mile section as a whole to determine the level of impacts for the proportionate share. Mostly because at the point where the road is in need of the most work, and also our Public Works Director, Josh Ober, is here today, uh, who can speak to the, to the work required on the road if you need him to. Um, but the section of the road needing the most work is where there's the least amount of traffic. So the proportionate share for this developer, if we're looking at proportionally across the board, would be greater than seven fiftieths. Did that answer that question?
If, if we use the entire road.
If we use the entire road and perform, and ha, and require the developer to perform a traffic impact study.
I guess I'd like to hear from Josh for a minute, I have a couple of questions for Josh. Morning, Josh.
Morning, Josh Ober, Public Works.
So we all went and looked at this road, and, and I, I think the first portion of the road is, you know, it's in fair shape.
All but about the last two hundred yards of the roadways.
I think, I think that's the spot that's in question.
Yes, sir.
I mean.
Currently, in that last two hundred yards, it's a fifteen foot wide roadway. And to handle the volume of traffic, it would need to move to a twenty-four foot drivable surface, which extends it out significantly farther past the shoulder into this steep draw that you have several draws coming up right before you hit the property boundary line. It looks as if even two foot of that drivable surface would be into that steep drop-off, and then you would either have to have, uh, a very, very steep shoulder or a retaining wall of some sort to hold back the drivable surface. There's very limited, that road appears to have moved all the way as far as it can to the north within the, the current right-ofway. I think a right-ofway survey would be needed for that one, just to, before you even started to decide if there is room to move the road farther to the north, how, how much farther you could move it to the north. I mean, without knowing exactly where that right-ofway is at, it would be hard to establish the scope of work there.
I know, looking at the aerial maps based off the section line which the road is on, it looks like it's pushed to the south as about as far as it can go.
Yep, it, it's, the road appears to have moved as far as it can in order to get away from that steep gullies that are in there.
Okay.
Also, Commissioner Delger and I did quite a bit of research on that road in the vault, in the road books with Ms. Ann's assistance, and that is a county road that was approved in the early nineteen hundreds. And that county road actually extends an additional one mile, and is, it's two miles of road on that section line. So currently, it's only one mile that's actually being maintained by the county. But without, the first step would have to be a right-ofway survey, just to figure out what, what area you have left to move. It appears that the road has moved as far as it can towards, towards the north away from those southern gullies because of the substantial amount of work that would be required to drop down through there.
And who would be responsible for the right-ofway survey?
That would be a question for Jania or Nicole.
I suppose I would tend to think the burden would be on the developer because it is, because of the subdivision that this is happening, um, that this is even being looked at. However, since it is a county road, I think that we could make a, an argument for a fifty-fishy.
So Josh, if, if, if that easement goes into that property another mile, are, are we, we're not required to build a road in there or to maintain a road, right?
Just because county, just because it is a county road, doesn't mean that the county has the burden of maintaining it. That's up to the commission's discretion set upon our budget. Once again, that road was established at the very, in the early nineteen hundreds from what we were looking on. Sections, branch intersections of roads off of that have been abandoned through the years, but currently, two full sections worth of road are still on the books as a county road. But it has never, it appears that it has not been maintained or, or touched for a very, very long time. And it is gated, and there's current lit, or current ruling out of Fergus County that said if the landowner is gated and then uncontested for X amount of years, then, then it has the potential of becoming a private road from that point on. But we couldn't find anywhere in the road book or commission meeting minutes that that last section had been abandoned by the commission at any point in time. I think it was just not maintained from that point, and it was under the assumption that the county road ended right at that development.
I guess question two, Josh, for you, would, uh, the road department want to be involved in?
The construction of?
He, no, I'm saying, maybe, I mean, if all the materials are supplied, I mean, that was one option, I think, that was offered by.
It, it was offered by developer, and, and we went out and took a look at the, the material that he was using. But when I, I looked online on DEQ's permitting se, or permitting site, and it, it's not a DEQ permitted site, so the county wouldn't be able, it wouldn't definitely not be in the county's best interest to use that on a roadway if there ever was an incident and we were using gravel from a non-permitted site. I can only imagine the liability that would come from that.
Sure, but if he was the source from a different, different, different source, you, you know what I'm saying?
If we had a, if we could do like and kind labor for our county's proportionate share, that would be in our interest.
But that's where I'm going.
At a bare minimum, the county should retain the ability to send our engineers and, and have final inspection of the road. But, uh, for us to be able to do, uh, like and kind labor for our proportionate share would be, since the, if this goes through, it would be a fairly big burden on the, on the taxpayers for a road. And then, and if we could use like and kind labor to offset that, then that, I believe that would be in the county's interest.
Okay. And that's, that's what I, where I was going with that.
Similar to what we'll do on the flat ground.
Correct. Okay.
Any other questions for me, Commissioners?
Um, no, not right now, thanks.
Thank you.
Don't run away. So I guess my thoughts are that there needs to be a lot of preliminary work done here before we can make a decision on this. First off, probably the first thing that needs to be done is the, um, right-ofway survey, at least on that portion of the road. Like, I can't imagine that would be extremely expensive.
So Nicole, i- i- if, if you require him to do the seven- So Nicole, i- i- if, if you require him to do the seven fiftieths. In reality, the other forty-three fifths would have to come from the taxpayers with no, with no benefit to any of, of those taxpayers other than those people that are living in the subdivision.
That is correct.
And I guess that brings up a good point, right Mike, that, um, we're setting a precedent here. For future development, anybody could put on the end of any of our unimproved county roads, which we have a lot of. And then also, then now it's the burden of the taxpayers of Broadwater County to improve portion of that road. Uh, that benefits generally the developer in that case.
It, it, it's another, it's another price road.
It's exactly what I'm thinking. You know, the oth- the other part of that is, is, is we do have to answer to our taxpayers, I mean, we're responsible for, for trying to look out their best interests. That's what they elected us to do and. You know, we're taking away resources from our limited county budget to improve this road. Which means that, uh, it's a possibility that other things may not get done on, on the roads that we are trying to maintain. Uh, that's just one of my thoughts. Yeah.
I think this might be one of them that, that, i- it's hard to make a decision exactly like you said until you have the right of way survey. And you have an estimate on what the total costs are.
Right.
So, yeah, I guess it would be my suggestion to maybe table it until those numbers are in.
Uh huh.
And then that way you understand the, the scope of work that you're having to deal with. I don't envy your guys' decision one way or the other, but unless you have realistic figures to work with, it'd be very difficult to make an informed decision.
And, and that's true, I understand that, I just want everyone to understand. Some of the reasons behind the decisions that we're gonna make in the future. You know, the other part of that too is, you know, you, you have to look at this, the public safety and welfare side of that. Uh, that road has to be up to the county standard for, uh, for those reasons. I mean, uh, emergency services may be called out there, we gotta make sure that they can respond appropriately. And, uh, the folks that live out there, they need to be able to drive that road safely. So leaving it in the condition that it is and trying to approve this subdivision is not the, not the thing to do. I guess that's where I'm going with that. So, how would you guys like to proceed as far as for, you wanted, you wanna try to get a right of way survey done first and then? Like Josh stated, we need to have those, we need to have those estimates of those figures in front of us and to make some of those decisions as well.
I personally can't move forward until we do have those figures.
Yeah.
You know, we have, we all separately went out there to the road and it's, it's not safe at this point to have people go up and down there, much less emergency vehicles.
So if, i- if we do the, the, the right of way survey and we find out that those fences that have been constructed up there have to be relocated, relocated, that's on that landowner. That's, that's not any cost to the county or to the developer.
They would be, they would have put an obstruction in the county's right of way and it would be, we would be able to remove it if we so chose with whatever means. But it would be on the, it, to my knowledge, it would be on the individual to put the obstruction in the right of way to remove it.
Right. So I guess my suggestion would be to, if, to move, if to move forward on this, we need to have the right of way survey. The, uh, engineering and the estimates to do this project so that we can determine what the appropriate share should be. Does that sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable to me, I don't know, the, the thing is that I don't, it, it doesn't seem to me that irregardless of what the right of way survey is. I don't see where it's the rest of the county taxpayers obligation to improve a road for two hundred yards that serves one subdivision and one surrounding property owner. There's, there'd be a maple total of three, of two residences on that road right now. And then when you add his seven or how many ever, hundred more he's gonna put back in there. Maybe if he wanted to pay us, you know, a proportion of all of his profits, maybe we could do that. But th- there's, there's no way for the county to recover that taxpayer money and I don't see any sense in putting taxpayer money into it. But I would agree with doing a right of way survey.
Okay.
So I guess we need a, a motion then to?
Uh, I guess first let's discuss the right of way survey, how do we wanna do that? We wanna, wanna split that, should, should it, uh, be the county's responsibility since it's our road?
I, I would think that that would be the county's responsibility, see just exactly where our road is and why it's where it's at.
I agree with that. How about you Dan?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I guess with that then, I, I will make the motion that we, we proceed by, uh, having the right of way survey done, the county will pay for that. And it will be up to the developer to provide the, uh, estimate and the engineering to improve that road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
The motion has been made to?
Hold on Mike.
Yes.
Bernadette Swenson from Shawbor Surveying, um, and I, I guess I'll go to Nicole too. I don't know how this works with the deadline of the subdivision. Um, you know, a lot of times the engineering and the estimates all come be- between preliminary and final. Um, you know, I think it may be in the best interest of everyone if a condition of approval or the, the condition is figured out. At that point in time, the landowner could look at it to see whether he even decides to move forward, uh, of what the expense would be. Um, normally the progression of these is, you know, the, the sub, the developer is required to pave the road. Or, uh, you know, and I, I, just like some of the past subdivisions, when a developer has determined that, that doesn't. Offset the cost, you know, to u- upgrade the road for the subdivision. So I mean, I, I think a condition should be determined that that point in time. You know, the engineering, the right of way surveys, all that would proceed later because. I mean, the landowner may just say, you know, it's seven lots, uh, this isn't gonna be worth my time.
Uh huh.
And now the county has spent money on that, uh. So I, you know, just to proceed as we normally do is to just come up with a condition. Um, that may require these things, but all of these things could happen if the developer, when the developer proceeds. For final, if that makes sense?
That does make sense.
Because otherwise I don't know how to handle the, the deadlines, um, that are with the subdivision, uh.
This subdivision does have a deadline, uh, of April twentieth of twenty twenty-one. Unless you request an additional extension from the developer. And I understand what Bernadette is saying, um, maybe if the engineering costs of the road are too great for this developer to bear. But do we still, do we still desire to know where our actual right of way is, where the road lies within the right of way? Um, because this may come up again later for further lands or future development along that roadway. So, um, my thought is always if you identify a problem, you should work to mitigate it. And in this instance, we have identified a potential problem in that we are not exactly certain where that road lies within our right of way. So it does make sense to have the right of way survey completed at this point. If nothing else, then for the county's benefit and knowledge moving forward in the future. Although it is a cost to the county.
I, I would agree with that, so could, so can, can you, would you, would you write another condition in here for approval as far as the preliminary plat goes? I guess my question is how would you word that, that condition?
So to me, it seems as if this right of way survey is being requested or commissioned. As a result of this subdivision, but it would not necessarily be a preliminary plat condition or a condition of preliminary plat approval. Because the county is performing the survey and funding the survey. I don't know that we would necessarily build it in here as a condition of approval for the developer because the list of conditions of approval are obligations for the developer to meet. I would think that it may be appropriate through all of this discussion to add some additional conditions in here. Um, maybe one regarding a traffic impact study required by the developer. Um, one requiring engineering be performed for the completion and construction of K O A Road. Also that the Broadwater County engineer would also, um, be a party to that at the expense of the developer. So what I'm hearing is it may be best, or what I'm saying, I guess moreover, is that it may be best to wait a week to let me meet with Jania. To put in some potential conditions. Obviously, we can't add any conditions, I can't add conditions at this point and the planning board cannot add conditions. The commissioner, the only body that can add conditions of approval to this findings of fact and order report. But based on this discussion, instead of tabling it a week after the deadline, um, that might be beneficial. If these are some conditions that you were interested in adding, based on your discussion.
If we have that condition written in or?
But I don't think you should have the right of way survey built into the conditions of approval if you're not financially obligating the developer.
But we can have those conditions writ- written for us so that we can put those conditions on next week and then we'll still be ahead of the deadline.
I still feel that you should make the recommendation for these conditions. If these are conditions, again, this is just my notes gathering through this conversation here, you haven't made an official motion. But then instead of adding those conditions and then waiting another week, um, you can, you can discuss adding those conditions now. But give me time to go back and formulate them into a more eloquent, uh, format and also with legal opinion and then bring them back next week. But I would still need you to make the motion of those conditions if you would like to add them. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So to do that Nicole, what do you need from us at this point, you need a motion or not?
Yes, a motion to add additional conditions, if you choose to add those conditions that you were speaking of.
But the only one, only additional condition we're requesting right now is the right of way.
That would not be a condition, so from my notes what I've gathered, um, that you would, you would like the developer to perform a traffic impact study. As, as one option, um, to maybe amend a condition. So instead of seven fiftieths, it would be a proportionate share based on the traffic impact study. And then also engineering and construction of K O A Road.
So is everyone, you wanna have a motion?
You guys agree with that?
Yeah, uh, the right of way survey, that's a separate thing, right? So what I guess kinda helped me along here, the motion would be to, uh, add additional conditions to number seven. That would include, uh, a proportional share, engineering. Uh, uh, estimates for cost of construction. And a traffic study.
Is there a second?
Is that, does that, did I cover all those you guys? Is that right?
Um, may I ask a quick clarifying question? Um, on the engineering that you've mentioned, um, who, who would be doing that engineering?
The developer would have to do that.
Okay, would you guys want the ability to have some input into that?
I think our own county engineer would, um, have to review that, right? That, that's what we've done in the past, isn't it Nicole?
We have done that in the past on other roads, yes.
Yeah.
I guess I would encourage to, since you've done it on the past, to include it in this.
Okay, okay, and then I guess then we would add that, that the county engineer would review.
I would second the motion.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
Is it covered enough? Any further discussion, any public comment? Take a vote, all in favor? Aye, aye, pose same, motion carries. So this will be on the agenda next Monday?
That would, that would give me enough time, I just want to make sure that I, I capture all of this, um, and then can cite code and, uh.
Okay.
Make sure it's a little.
Okay, next is the, uh?
Can I ask for clarification on this, I'm sorry, so the right of way survey, do you want me to commission that or are you going to turn that over to Josh? Just since we've talked about it here, I wanna make sure that.
Well.
It doesn't, the ball doesn't get dropped.
Josh, you wanna initiate that? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. You just don't want each of us to think the other was taken care of.
So next is the decision for Dry Gulch Acres Track B minor subdivision request for preliminary plat approval.
And I have an extra one of these, do you, do you each have yours?
I still have mine, yes.
Alright, so this is the application of the Dry Gulch Acres Track B subsequent minor subdivision. This was read into the record also at last Monday's commission meeting. But we needed some clarification and some legal guidance on this one as well because there was not a condition built in. For the access road Dry Gulch, which is a county road. So currently, there is not a condition of approval in here regarding the two fiftieths of the improvements to Dry Gulch Road. So I will probably turn it over to Jania again if she is prepared to speak to that.
Yeah, is, is Josh still out there? Okay. Just before we get going, so I, I went up and looked at the, the Dry Gulch Road.
Yes, sir.
And I noticed a utility company plowed across our road to put in power line. Did they get a permit to do that?
I have not done an encroachment permit for utilities.
Okay, can you follow up on that, please?
I will. On Dry Gulch?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
So similarly to Antelope Run under seventy-six, three, five, ten, you do have the, the ability to require them to pay costs for a proportionate amount of upgrades. It is a may in there, it's not a must, so it does allow for it, but you're not required to do it. I, I feel like I just covered everything on the previous one, so I don't know if you would like me to recover all of that. But it might be better for me to answer specific questions on this one.
So, so what, what two fiftieths of the, the cost of the improvements to the road, that only covers to their furthest boundary on the road, adjacent to the road, right?
To their driveway.
What's that?
Just to their driveway.
Just to their driveway.
Furthest east driveway.
Okay.
And, and ultimately, I think we need to be looking at proportionate shares, maybe not two fiftieths, because we don't know what that two fiftieths is based off of. And what I'm seeing in statute is proportionate share, so that would be one thing to note.
And this, this, this minor doesn't really require any improvements to the road, to Dry Gulch?
We currently, no. I did not have that in there as a condition of approval, and the planning board did not add it either.
Yeah. I guess it's pretty well-established county road.
Yeah.
Right.
And it does say in here, it, it does look like it's for improvements, it's not necessarily, you know, if, if you were to require it on this one, you would need to, like I say, set up a separate bank account and only use that funds on that road. But it's, it's, it's a may, not a must on this in statute, so.
I guess just my thoughts are I don't see a need to require that in this particular instance. I mean, it's a very well-established maintained county road, but I may be wrong.
So if, if, if we don't require this on this one, is any future development up there? Could you require it on that one, or now are you setting a standard where you're, you didn't require it for the first six houses on the road, but now you're requiring, you're requiring it on the next six houses on the road?
Well, I think it would depend on degradation of road, deterioration over time, number of vehicle trips per day added. And I think also, again, this is more Jania's territory than mine, getting into the legal language of it, but the fact that it says may still gives you the latitude to utilize seventy-six, three, five, ten, or call it into play.
So let me play the devil's advocate here. That, that lot was already subdivided once, right?
That is correct.
So they're, they're just simply dividing that lot for the two home sites.
That's correct.
So would that proportional share, whatever, have already been paid on that prior?
I don't recall if it was or not. If, if a proportionate share was paid on, on the development of, because originally, the Dry Gulch Acres subdivision was a two-lot minor subdivision. So now they're taking Dry Gulch Acres Track B and splitting it in half, which makes it subsequent. So the sum total of lots in the Dry Gulch Acres original subdivision will now total three.
I guess I just see it as a, as a big difference from what we were discussing before with Antelope Run versus this particular one. I mean, their, their driveway already comes out on a, on a, as well-established county-maintained road. You, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
But I don't want to set a precedent where people think that we're playing favorites or something of that nature. I'm just trying to be realistic.
I think there's two separate issues.
It, it is two separate issues in my mind.
So is, is there another, there's one other subdivision above this subdivision?
Yes.
So was that subdivision charged proportionate share?
I do not believe so. But I don't have that file in front of me to know for certain, but I do not believe so.
Brad, do you have anything to add? Brad? Okay. Jania, what was the, the statute number on that says that we may do that?
It is under seventy-six, three, five, ten.
Okay.
So is, is there a motion to make the proportionate share condition to be included with the Dry Gulch Acres preliminary plat approval? Seeing no motion, I guess we will not add it to this, to this preliminary plat. So did we have to have a motion to approve the preliminary plat? So is there a motion to approve the application for the preliminary plat of Dry Gulch plat of Dry Gulch Acres Track B subsequent minor subdivision?
Let you do that, Debbie, because I wasn't here last week.
I will make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made to prove the preliminary plat application for Dry Gulch Acres Track B. Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same. Motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is Westside Trails major subdivision phasing plan amendment.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you, folks.
You guys gonna start next week?
Yar.
Yeah? Hopefully, alright.
Do you want me to begin reading this? I know we're a little behind on the schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. So this letter is dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one to the county planning department. However, after receiving legal counsel, it was determined that the phasing plan amendment should actually be approved by the commissioners, not the planner or the planning board, which is why it's being presented to you here today. You should have a copy of it, this February seventeenth letter in your packet. I believe that was part of what Mark passed out to you earlier as well. So I will begin reading it into the record. Dear Ms. Brown, this letter is our phasing plan amendment for Westside Trails subdivision for Three Forks Properties LLC. We have been asked to provide estimated timelines and show the proposed phases. The applicant is proposing to maintain the four phases described in previous recent correspondence. The overall project is a residential subdivision located in Section eighteen, township two north, range one east, Broadwater County, Montana. The overall subdivision consists of two hundred and forty-two residential lots and totals approximately five hundred thirty-six point six one acres and is located approximately five miles northwest of the city of Three Forks, Montana. The overall project is located approximately two miles west of Highway two eighty-seven on the south side of Wheatland Road and just east of the Broadwater-Jefferson County line. Each of the two hundred forty-two lots are designated for one single-family dwelling. As outlined in the final plat application for Phase One, the subdivision lots are intended to be marketed and sold in different phases. Thus, phasing of the subdivision was requested for final plat in two thousand eight. Westside Trails subdivision Phase One consists of forty-seven lots on eighty-seven point six one acres and was recorded on November tenth, two thousand eight. Extensions have been granted for the subsequent phases of the overall development. Based on build-out estimates from the applicant and project team, they anticipate building fifteen homes per year, which is summarized in the following anticipated timeline. Westside Trails subdivision Phase Two, consisting of fifty lots on one hundred ten point nine nine acres, final plat application submitted in December twenty twenty. Proposed final plat recording is March twenty twenty-one. Anticipated Phase Two, build-out of fifty lots, fifteen homes per year, is three point three three years. Westside Trails subdivision Phase Three, consisting of fifty-three lots on one hundred point seven nine acres, proposed final plat application in March twenty twenty-four. Proposed final building, or I'm sorry, proposed final plat recording is June twenty twenty-four. Anticipated Phase Three, build-out of fifty-three lots at fifteen homes per year, is three point five three years. Westside Trails subdivision Phase Four, consisting of ninety-two lots on two hundred thirty-seven point two two acres, proposed final plat application in September twenty twenty-seven. Proposed final plat recording is January twenty twenty-eight. Anticipated Phase Four, build-out of ninety-two lots at fifteen homes per year, is six point one three years. The overall subdivision consists of two hundred forty-two residential lots. Anticipated full build-out of Westside Trails remaining Phases Two, Three, and Four is approximately thirteen years or so, so approximately the year twenty thirty-four. The above referenced timeline and dates have been summarized as the best estimate from the applicant and project team and is based on anticipated build-out of fifteen homes per year. It is possible the actual build-out may vary slightly, thus, final plat submissions for Phase Three and Phase Four may be sooner or potentially later than estimated. Phase One is anticipated to be one hundred percent built-out in early March of this year in the next two to four weeks. This project was proposing to final plat Phase Two and Phase Three, consisting of a total approximately two hundred and eleven point seven eight acres into one hundred three residential lots. Based on the phasing plan amendment per the estimated build-out and above referenced timeline, the applicant is proposing to final plat Westside Trails subdivision Phase Two in March of twenty twenty-one. Phase Two consists of fifty lots on one hundred ten point nine nine acres, generally consisting of one to one and a half acre lots, with some lots as large as four plus acres to be developed as residential. Each lot to consist of a single-family home. Total Phase Two open space is twenty-three point three acres. A final plat of Phase Two will be provided, and a financial guarantee for installation of dry utilities, electric service, will be provided for construction this spring of twenty twenty-one. We understand that this letter, which serves as our phasing plan amendment for Westside Trails subdivision, replaces the need for any additional preliminary plat extensions. Thus, extensions are not required for this project. Please let us know otherwise. Sincerely, Mark Fasting, engineer with Allied Engineering Services. Part of this packet, you'll also see some preliminary phasing plan maps that identify each of the phases. And as we previously discussed during the extension request, I, I think this phasing plan amendment might, the timelines might need to be adjusted some, but I will turn it over to Mark Fasting or Alana Griffiths if they have something further to add, but I have nothing further to add.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Mark Fasting, again, Allied Engineering. I guess the main thing I just wanted to mention is that the phase plan amendment was based on anticipated timelines, obviously. There are estimates. And we'd be okay with what was discussed today in terms of a twenty-year phasing plan from two thousand and seven, I believe, was the preliminary plat, maybe it was, okay. Rather than, you know, fifteen homes a year, so. So I just wanted to make sure that the letter, you know, was estimated, but obviously, if there's a restriction on timeline based on the statute, we're okay with what's allowed. Shorten it, of course. Outside of that, I guess unless Alana has anything or Curtis, that's all I really had. And I guess the timing, obviously, we submitted the phase plan amendment in February and then later submitted the plat extension, so it's kind of, you know, now that I understand what's happening with the codes, we'd both be okay with that extension for twenty years since two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight?
Two thousand and seven was, we went back and looked, it was two thousand and seven for the preliminary plat.
Okay.
And the phasing plan is almost there because it's when you submit for final plat, it's not the build-out of the homes. So our last submission on the final plat in there was two thousand and twenty-eight, wasn't it? So we would have to amend that to two thousand and twenty-seven. I think, I think June is closed, but I can't remember when that was.
Preliminary plat approval was granted by the commission on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven.
And I hate to say this, to say, I've been on this case since that time. So there you go. That would be, the reason that this law was passed was so that there was certainty for the developer and for the commission and for the county. So the developers are constantly coming back in and asking for extensions and that there's a full thought-out plan of when the build-out should generally happen in these larger subdivisions. So many times with these larger subdivisions, we get out to thirty years and they still wouldn't be built out, and that's just not acceptable. The developers need a timeline, and the commission can't just simply be granting these extensions constantly. It's just not good. But it also gives planning and it gives legal, it gives everyone certainty of where this development is going, and if they don't meet the deadlines, they're done. It's not, everyone comes in and wonders and what's the liability of the commission if they deny it when it's halfway built? It's, we've given you the time and now it's done. But at least it's a, generally a reasonable time for these types of developments to be built out. That's my opinion, at least.
Okay, thank you. I know we had a discussion, Nicole, on, on the things that needed to happen for this to take place, and there were some deficiencies. Have them, have all those been addressed?
No, and that will actually, those will actually be addressed once the phasing plan amendment is finalized.
Okay.
By you approving the phasing plan amendment, that does not mean that Phase Two is now finalized. You still have to meet those conditions of approval for Phase Two.
Okay, right. Part of that discussion was some fees as well, application fees. Is, or is anything there? Or not?
Only final plat application fees are, are, are the only thing we need to mark.
Okay. 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 So how's this timeline gonna work now? You know, your, your, your projection was thirteen years to get to phase four. Now it needs to be completed by twenty twenty-seven.
Well, um, I think the main thing, just to reiterate, final plat versus homes, I mean, phasing the final plat is more of a condition requirement. So that people can start building homes. Whether they get built on in the next five years, ten years, fifty years, you know, that's, that's up to the market and whether people decide to build. A lot of people buy homes and, or lots and don't build a home for many, many years. They just hold on to it for whatever reason, retirement or something. So in this circumstance, I guess, however you approve or whatever documentation needs to be completed, um, those were estimates for each phase, just based on an anticipated buildout. And I guess I would be inclined to, and Alana might help me out here if I misspeak, but basically that phase two, phase three, phase four would need to submit for independent final plats within that specified timeline before twenty twenty-seven. We're actually, we submitted a final plat for phase two and three, but with all the unknowns and it just kinda, that's how we're here today. I was gonna basically submit a new final plat for phase two only, probably this week. And then we'll have to talk to the owner and s- find out, hey, do you guys wanna pay for vigilante to go out there and, and submit a final plat for phase three sooner than later? So again, anticipated timelines, I, I think the best way to probably word the phase plan development, it references the maps, which was the proposed phases, but more of a broad scope that all four phases, that each subsequent phase needs to be submitted independently for final plat to meet all those conditions and be evaluated, uh, on a phase by phase basis. And when those are submitted, it doesn't matter as long as they're completed prior to that twenty years from the preliminary plat approval of two thousand and seven. The two thousand and eight was a final plat for phase one, just so you know the difference. Does that make sense?
And for the record, the developer has agreed to submit to, uh, six seventeen, the, the provisions at six seventeen where he would have to come back and have a hearing each time before those final phases were approved so that anyone within the county who had any issues with that phase of the development could come here and let you know if they did.
So do we need to have, uh, Nicole, do we need to have a hearing then if we, uh, move forward on phase two? Is that, that's a requirement, isn't it?
So seemingly if we are complying with seventy-six, seventy-six, three, six, seventeen, once phase two is submitted for final plat approval, there would be a public hearing at the commission level.
Right.
It would have to read through the law to determine if that was before or after, I would assume after I determined that it met every condition of approval and then we would hold public hearing because otherwise.
That's kinda, that's kinda how I read it, so. So, yeah. So I guess, yeah, what, what our question is today is whether we're here to approve the phasing plan amendment, is that correct?
That is correct, that's the question, yeah. Um, and I think it would be wise to, uh, amend the phase board date to February twenty twenty-seven from January twenty twenty-eight.
Yep.
And what about the last date, twenty thirty-four?
So that's buildout and we really have no control over that and, you know, depending on the market, they, they could be, you know, twenty-one, thirty-four before they're completely built out, so.
So that's fine to leave that in there. That was, okay, thank you.
I just have a question for clarification, if there would be a need to come back for further extensions and I believe the answer is no then? Is that?
My, my understanding under the statute is that it gives a hard twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
And so, the, and so there, there is no extension at the end of the twenty years, that's what I understand.
Okay. So we won't need to do this again at the end of one year?
Correct, we will need to do the, all of the stuff in here for, for final plat, but nothing for four.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other thoughts here, Mike?
Nope.
Debbie? I guess I will make the motion to approve the, uh, phasing plan amendment for Westside Trails minor subdivision. Make the correction, correction down on, uh, phase four to that date of February twenty twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the, uh, Westside Trails phasing plan amendment. Is there any further discussion, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same, motion carries.
Alright, good luck you guys.
Thank you for your time.
Go build some houses. So, uh, I guess, uh, you, Mark, you said you're gonna submit, uh, phase two?
Yeah, it's basically it's.
Okay.
It's already, uh, we need to do improvement agreement and, uh, they'll let us know.
Alright, very good.
Vigilance, uh, like this, this stuff has been paid, it has been paid. So they're on schedule, we'll get the easement recorded, so they can go out there and, and support final plat.
All utilities.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, like supposedly vigilance or lecture, they used to go out there and put utilities in like from Western Energy prior to final plat. Uh, but they don't wanna do that anymore because the easements aren't in place, so we have to record easement.
Sure. Okay.
There was a test report case that said possibly the easements on a plat are not good enough for utility to use. So now we have to do actual easements. It's causing some issues, so.
Alright.
It also takes care of the climate.
I don't know. No, I'll, I'll ask, uh, Tabarachi. We have a telephone conversation tomorrow, so hopefully he'll tell me what, why he's requiring this. He's a Northwestern attorney.
Okay.
Just like, it's a place out in the low, big stuff. Can't get power.
Yep.
There are no exceptions. Refused, but absolutely refused. Oh, interesting.
Okay, good.
And in the Alt County, normally they've, utilities sometimes go in before final plat, sometimes after, it's using other conditions, but sometimes they get in before and it's kinda nice because then when the final plat is ordered and it's done.
Sure.
Including the roads, killing, just.
Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Nope.
Yeah, this is what it takes sometimes, COVID's been tough.
I mean, you know what people look like from here.
Yeah, when I said we started a year ago, it's basically the plane and the traffic study and then COVID hit and that was just like a four or five months delay, so.
Thank you for your time.
So, uh, we'll see you guys for the public hearing.
Yeah.
When that comes up?
Will do, yep.
You'll see him at least, maybe me.
Okay.
Sounds good, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a decision to approve the Silos Recreationary Management contract with Canyon Enterprises.
Um, Canyon Enterprises went ahead, Esther, and signed it. But I noticed there was still our little red B instead of a brown, black, so we will fix that. But it's been approved by Esther, by B O R, by Janey.
Yay.
Our mini, mini, mini go-arounds.
I'll be honest with you guys, I never expected it to take this long. But, uh, I think we have a good contract, everybody's, everybody's happy with it.
Everybody's happy with it.
So, um, I'm excited to move forward. I think it's gonna be something good for our Silos Recreation area and, um, I'm glad that we're there, so. I'll let you make that motion, Deb, it's in your area.
I would move to accept the operation and maintenance of the Silos Recreation Area at Canyon Ferry Resort Four between Broadwater County and Canyon Enterprises Incorporated.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion, any comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries.
Let's see, does this Mike sign it?
Yeah, I don't know if there was a place for Mike to sign it up for.
Yep, right there. It's, it's all on you. So they, they're out there working, aren't they?
She was going to deliver some supplies out there this weekend, she asked if that was okay. So I don't know if she's actually worked or just delivered. She was waiting till that got sent.
True, okay, let's see, we have minutes from April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve minutes from April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Partner National Resources letter. Rural Fire Capacity Grant Funds Available, I believe we wanna pass this probably on to Ed Schindler. Letter from D Q. Shepherd School Discharge Program, what is Shepherd School Wastewater System. And the Bridge Report for Broadwater County, this has reports on the Toston Bridge and the three bridges we put into the roads for Carson Lane, Lightning Barn, and Clopton Lane. They all passed. So is there anything else to come before the commission? No further discussion, no public comment, we will adjourn at twelve twenty-five. We have a closed door at two.
Um, just so you know, I, I realized on my closed door that we might not have.
See you Shirley.